Good evening. It is 6:15 on November the first. I'd like to call our public hearing to order for zoning cases 2023-12 MA and 2023-13 MA. Mr. Yucotter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Case 2023-12 MA, the subject property is 11-501 Northlake Drive. The applicant is Robert Lucky Group, Inc. Surrounding zoning to the east, west, and south is F. Light Industrial to the north, kind of in the direction of Kids First is O. Office. A matter for background in case 2022-15 P2 approved, three single-family office buildings totaling 35,424 square feet. The proposed uses in that case were office, medical or non-medical, a possible boutique and a restaurant. The triggering factor for this major adjustment case for Northlake Commons is the daycare use that's proposed in this case as it was not cited in the 2022-15 P2 case, in addition to some site arrangement changes. Fronting East Kemper Road and directly adjacent to March 1st Brewing, Lightbridge Academy seeks to be sighted in building one of Northlake Commons, and I have it highlighted on the screen. On a given day at the site, the daycare proposes to have 23 employees and up to 180 children present. Further necessitating the major adjustment case, the proposed use requires major adjustment site changes, as I mentioned. On October 10th, 2023, the Sycamore Township Zoning Commission voted to approve the case with the conditions in a four to zero vote. As for the site arrangement changes, you can see some in front of you between the zoning commission and now. This proposal does not propose to alter the square footage of the 11,808 square foot building. After feedback from staff in the zoning commission, in contrast to the original 2022-15 P2 approved plan, the parking count is proposed to be reduced by a total of 14 parking spaces to make way for a 6,276 square foot outdoor play area. On the original play area they proposed, it was 3,800 square feet. As for the play area, a six-foot privacy fence and additional landscaping is proposed to enclose the outdoor play area. In the play area, several play set elements are proposed, too. As for some analysis, the proposed use of the daycare at the subject property would be harmonious with not only the Northlake Commons development, but also the surrounding area, for example, Kids First is across the street. For the daycare to meet parking requirements, the daycare would need to be capped at 180 children and 23 staff members with no daycare vehicles. With the loss of 14 parking spaces, the parking count for the daycare is still sufficient at 53 parking spaces, so 152 parking spaces are provided, 151 are shown. The parking analysis is accurate, or it does, it's not too conservative because it considers medical office, which considers more of a parking need, so if non-medical office goes in, that improves the parking ratio essentially. Related to the play area, I just do want to note that the section 10, or chapter 10, section 8.1 requires a daycare center receiving state certification to have 100 square feet of outdoor play space per child. Essentially, the zoning commission required them to meet that standard. That's why there was the change, the bump up from 3,800 square feet to 6,276, and this gives them some flexibility. They said their current operations at most will have 56 children outside. Let's sit here. The last bit of information I just want you to know is the, in terms of the zoning resolution, it requires all outdoor play areas to be in the rear yard. If you can see here, the majority of the play area is in the rear yard. There is some in the side yard, but I saw that as de minimis, given the landscaping they're going to put in and the fencing. Lastly, the proposed landscape plan updates around the outdoor play area are appropriate and meet the standard of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution. We lost the screen. I'll just read it. So all conditions of the original case 2022-15 P2 case shall remain in full force and effect unless amended to this case. Condition two, influenced by parking minimum requirements at a maximum on any given day at the site of the building. One, any daycare facility that operates via this plan shall be capped at 180 children and 23 staff members. Daycare transportation is not permitted to house daycare transportation vehicles. Three, the outdoor play area shall be capped at a maximum of 62 children, students outside at the outdoor play area at any given time, provided the outdoor play area is maintained consistent with the approved site plan to at least 6,200 square feet, which is consistent with the code. Four, all subject property landscaping shall be maintained in healthy condition per the approved landscape plan of this case. And five, this case is exclusive to building one of the subject property. If a daycare, school use, or like use is proposed in the future for building two or three, the buildings behind, a major adjustment case would be required. And with that, that's all I have, and I will try to get the screen back up. Are there any questions?
I don't have any.
I do not either.
Would the applicant like to say anything? Would you? You don't have to. If you'd like to, you're welcome to. If so, you'd like to step to the stand, step to the podium, just because there's a microphone there and it's being recorded, so that way they'll be able to hear you.
If you're going to provide some testimony, I'll swear you into the public hearing. Okay? Do you swear to the testimony you're about to give, the true, full truth, and the truth of your background?
I do. Good evening. Scott Lucky, owner of Robert Lucky Group. Address is 8825 Chapel Square Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio 45249. Just wanted to say thanks to Jeff. You know, Jeff's done a great job stepping in. I know you guys have had some turnover in this position, but this is, he's been wonderful to work with, very detailed on helping out, not just with this, but other aspects of this development, and even some other developments that we've been finishing up. So, done a great job in that position, so I know, I just wanted to put that out there. Number two, this site that we're looking at, if you guys remember when I first came through, this site was actually in question if we were going to do a parking lot for March 1st at one time versus, at some point, I thought that maybe a daycare could come in here. I was surprised that we had to come back through the process, and I didn't already have that approved at that time, so, but again, not a big deal. Ended up turning out that March 1st had declined what we were trying to accomplish, and, you know, Lightbridge Academy has taken advantage of the opportunity to hopefully put a daycare in this, in this building, and I think it'll be a nice addition to our development.
That's terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks great.
Anybody else, any other comments from anybody in the audience on this particular case? All right, then, Mr. Yucotter, I think we can move on to the next case.
Very good. Let me just pull that up. Okay. Case 2023-13 MA, it's at 7292 Kenwood Road. The applicant is Lemons and Limes Boutique LLC. The current zoning is E Retail. The surrounding zoning in all directions is E Retail. I would note, the parking is unchanged for this case. It's currently 15 parking spaces, and it will remain that way. Located in the Montgomery Kenwood Road SPI corridor district, any retail site under 100,000 square feet requires a PUD 2 under the code. A PUD 2 does govern the subject property's use. Back in case 2005-13 P2, there was a micro wines business there. Then in case 2013-04 MA, a major adjustment was approved to allow a salon known as Echelon as the primary use. Then it became Opal Beauty Bar, which failed and has been vacant since. In this case, Lemons and Limes seeks a major adjustment to change the use of the PUD from a salon use to the primary use of a retail boutique, generally selling products such as textile fabrics, glassware, jewelry, household decor, children's accessories, and kitchen wear. The applicant also notes that the use would include possible group styling events of up to 12 guests or patrons, think like Taylor Swift friendship bracelets. These private social events would be focused on craft making, such as, as I mentioned, friendship bracelets, making soap and the like. The applicant does note the intent that Lemons and Limes would like to reserve the right to acquire a liquor license, which they would go through the state on, on that. The site arrangement for the parking lot and the interior of the site were made the same. The landscape plan essentially mimics the 2013 approval, just refreshes it. On October 10th, 2023, in a four to zero vote, the zoning commission recommended approval with conditions. Just for some analysis, the use fits harmoniously in the E Retail district. Related to the use, something I put in the conditions, and I just wanted to make clear that if a future use, if Lemons and Limes were ever to move on and a future use were to be proposed, that wasn't a retail boutique, they would need to come in for a major adjustment. Related to the parking, the parking is sufficient at 15 parking spaces, and the landscape plan meets the requirements of the zoning resolution, and as I mentioned, is of similar concentration to the 2013-04 MA landscape plan. With that, for recommendation, as recommended by the zoning commission, staff recommends approval of the major adjustment to the PUD 2 with the following conditions. Number one, if applicable, all conditions of the 2013-04 MA case shall remain in full force and effect unless amended in this case. Two, the landscape plan of this case shall supersede the landscape plan shown in 2013-04 MA case. The proposed landscaping shall be installed within 60 days of the decision date of this case. Three, all private social events shall be limited to 12 guest patrons. Four, all parking related to this use shall be contained to the subject property. Five, unless modified in this case, all signage must conform to the Sycamore Township zoning resolution, chapter 13 E Retail standard. Six, to reiterate from the last case, no signage is permitted on the rear or side of the building. All signage must be on the Kenwood Road elevation of the building. Seven, related to the use in the context of this PUD, to make it excruciatingly clear, if the future Lemons and Limes were to vacate the space and a new user was to propose a new use, if the use were not a similar business, a boutique that generally sells the products listed, or as a separate, a separate major adjustment case would be required, and I list uses that, you know, but not limited to, that would require that, such as a gym, a salon, a small grocery store, a pet store, a convenience store, or a vape shop, and this is consistent with the zoning resolution. And eight, to reiterate from the 2013 case, no telecommunication towers are permitted on this site. With that, are there any questions?
I have one. The landscaping within 60 days of the decision date condition, is that practical at this time of year? I don't see what the plan is, but now that we're hitting freezing and below...
It is, if the ground is not freezing. If it became a mini ice agent, was very cold for a long period of time, of course, we would let them plant after, but it's still a good time to plant.
Okay.
Jeff, I have one question. The liquor license, is that only for the social events?
That's my understanding. In looking at their, in looking at their offerings, in terms of offerings, I do see, or I thought I saw some sort of craft, maybe I was wrong. I thought I saw a craft, maybe brewery or craft cocktail set or some sort, that might be a portion, but certainly it's not going to be a, I guess, a mainline function. The applicant can address if they sell any craft liquor on the side. As kind of like a gift item, I suppose.
I was envisioning it more of something along the lines that if they were having these parties at 12 people, that they would be serving it that way.
It's that, too, yeah.
So, you know, I think it's, it's probably dependent on the type of license that they procure from, that they want to procure from the state.
Right.
Because those are different licenses to sell.
Yes.
Can, you know, closed product versus serving open, open product. Anything else, any more questions from here? Okay. If the applicant is here, or anybody that wants to speak on behalf of the applicant, we certainly welcome you to do so. And again, if you would mind stepping to the podium, and you'll need to be sworn in as well. And then, if you can give your name and address for the record, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Just raise your hand. Do you swear to the testimony you're about to give, is the true, full truth, and the truth of your background?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Sophia Hawley. I'm at 1 East Fourth Street, Cincinnati, Ohio 45202, and I'm here as legal counsel for Lemons and Limes, and I'm joined by Ms. Wendy Knight. Thank you, Jeff, for all of your help. Just to sort of give a preview, we are good with all of the conditions that are being recommended. We think those are appropriate. Ms. Knight can confirm, she's a passionate small business owner. She owns several locations. I'm the target audience, one of the many people who's targeted. I would like to come. I leave these hearings and I go to Fresh Market, or sometimes, I, this is a wonderful opportunity for me to be in the area, so, and I have, I have twin toddlers at home, so it's very difficult to, like, dress myself. It's exhausting, so I, I'm excited for this business to come in, and I would just let Ms. Knight comment. I believe with respect to the liquor licensing, everything will be followed, all the protocols will be followed for that. And with respect to the landscaping, Mr. Yucotter's been very cooperative and very helpful, so we're confident that our landscapers will be able to get in, and if there's any sort of weather changes, that we can work with the township to make sure everything gets done.
Absolutely. So, thank you for your time tonight in hearing our case, and I'm here with my husband and my, one of my twins, Andrew. I founded Lemons. I'm a, I am a local business owner. I grew up actually right down the street in Kenwood, so this, this area is most home, most feels like home to us. And I do own, of course, Lemons and Limes Boutique. We have a location in downtown Loveland. It was a vacant property that we went in and renovated, and have subsequently created this boutique that makes, not only helps people buy gifts and buys apparel that makes them look great and feel great, but it's become a really positive place. We support a lot of community organizations, and most of the brands that we carry actually have a charitable component, give back. In addition to that, we do work with some groups about like early literacy, like story times and stuff like that, that may bring a few children in and work with them on different educational programs. So we really like to think of ourselves as not just a store or boutique, but really a place for the community as well, to bring, you know, to spotlight artisans, makers that may have their wares, but also as a gathering place, a positive gathering place. So, we have experience with taking a property that is vacant and turning it into something lovely. I love that challenge. We're really excited for it. So, we appreciate all the assistance that Jeff's given us on the landscaping plan especially. We have a landscaper ready to go, and he felt that he would be able to get everything in in that timeframe, barring, again, some sort of intense freeze. We do have a history of being good community members, and we appreciate the opportunity to be considered to bring our small business into Sycamore Township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board here? All right, with that, pardon? Anybody else in, from the public that would like to speak in relation to either one of these two zoning, well, actually, I guess we moved on from the first zoning case for the Lemons and Limes zoning case. Okay. With that, then, at 6:33, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and then next on our agenda is a 6:45 records commission hearing. So, we'll adjourn for roughly 10, 10 or 12 minutes or so, and then re-adjourn. Do I need a motion to close this meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meetings adjourned.
Good evening. It is 6:45 on Wednesday, November 1st, 2023. I'd like to call the 6:45 PM Records Commission meeting to order. Part of this commission will be myself, Mr. Dieters, and Mr. Kellums. Mr. Kellums, would you like to kick it off for us?
Yes, ma'am. So it's time for our review of our schedule of our records retention and disposition. There are three changes that we would like to make this year. The first one being Microsoft 365 Cloud Storage, which was never on our retention records. We just started using 365 recently. It was not on the schedule, and that is electronic, and that will be a permanent record. And then two of the other ones are FIRE and EMS reports. EMS reports, both of those were permanent before. EMS reports will now be seven years. FIRE reports will now be 10 years. So if I could get a motion to accept the changes for the Schedule of Records and Retention Disposition.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Did you call it?
Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Ms. Swigman.
Aye. I'm so used to saying Mr. Dieters. Mr. Kellums.[694.01][694.01](Laughter).
The second thing I have is a one-time disposal of obsolete records. Part of the changing of the records for the Life Squad and EMS was for Rossmoyn Life Squad runs and FIRE, Rossmoyn and FIRE runs. We have records dating all the way back to 1981. So we actually got an opinion from Larry on this, who said they did not have to be kept permanently. They were always kept permanently, but we would have to contact the Historical Society, which we did. The Historical Society said, "You can dispose them. You just have to do an RC-1," which is what this form is. It has all of the years listed for the Rossmoyn Life Squad runs and Rossmoyn FIRE runs. They said that the records were never ours, and this is the way to get rid of them.
So just for a bit of history, Rossmoyn was a volunteer?
Yes.
Fire department that we absorbed?
Before we had our public department.
Okay. And the Historical Society said that we could dispose of them because they weren't, they were never under the risk?
Yes, and that they do not need to be permanent anyway. So if I could get a motion to accept the changes in the one-time disposal of obsolete records for the RC-1 form.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Kellum.
Mr. Dieters.
Aye.
Ms. Swigman.
Aye.
That's all I have.
All right. Anything else while we're all together? Okay, then with that, at 6:48, we will close the Records Commission meeting. We will reconvene at 7:00 PM for our regular trustee meeting. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn. 6:48.
Good evening. It is 7:00 PM on Wednesday, November 1st, 2023. I'd like to call the regular trustee meeting to order. I'd hope everyone would please rise for the invocation given this evening by Mr. Callums.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings of this day. We thank you for life and the privilege to live in this great land. We ask you to bless our nation and its leadership. We pray for your blessings upon Sycamore Township, and we ask that you make our community a lighthouse in this city and beyond. We pray for each person in every department, and we work together in unity and seize every opportunity to encourage one another. We ask that you guide each decision that must be made this evening, and we ask for your wisdom and direction as we look to the future. In your name we pray. Amen.
Everyone would please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If Mr. Dieters would note that all three trustees are present, the first item on the agenda then is the approval of minutes from the October 17th, 2023 trustee meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Dieters?
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swigman.
Aye.
Mr. Weeden.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is a proclamation designating November as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. I have a proclamation here in front of me, proclamation by the Sycamore Township Board of Trustees, proclamation in recognition of Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, November is National Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease, and whereas, in 2023, an estimated 64,050 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 50,550 people will die from the disease. And whereas, pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers. It's currently the third leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States. And whereas, in 2023, the five-year relative survival rate for people diagnosed at all stages of this disease reached 12%. However, people diagnosed at the local stage have a five-year survival rate of 44%. And whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of Sycamore Township are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Township Trustees of Sycamore Township, State of Ohio, that the month of November is Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Signed and entered this first day of November, 2023.
We don't need a motion in that, do we?
Nope.
Okay.
That, I will start with you, Mr. James, and we'll just pass it down in normal fashion. I think that is the original, I believe. It looks very original, so.
It does not say you're gonna have to like my copy.
There you go. Trying not to let it go. Next item on the agenda are public comments. It looks like we've got two individuals signed up for public comments this evening. We will ask that you limit your comments to four minutes, and if you please would, when your name is called, if you'd step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. That would be helpful as this meeting does go into permanent archives. First individual on our list here is Barbara Stuckey.
No.
No? Okay. You get to speak later. Okay. And then it looks like the only other individual listed here is Tom Brockman.
I'm Tom Brockman, 8685 Stirbridge Drive. I am the HOA president of Stirbridge Association, and I have two concerns. One was addressed today, which was our playground area, which finally, after two years of being promised it was gonna be replaced, it looks like we're finally getting off the snide and getting something accomplished. My other major concern is, I was told there's more streets than just ours that had this hack job done to them, that the township seemed to approve. And at the time that the process was being done, I questioned Tracy Callums, who at that point was the head of roads and bridges, is this an acceptable product? And he said, oh yeah, it's very good looking, it's the way it's supposed to be, and everything's perfect with it. Then all of a sudden, we backpedal a little bit, and it's like, well, no, there's a lot of places in here that aren't quite up to snuff, and we're gonna get it fixed, but we can't do anything until it cools off. Well, I'm pretty sure we've cooled off now, and nothing has been addressed to fix this process. So I'm coming to the board saying, you need to just come in and strip off whatever they put in our subdivision, and put down asphalt, because the product that's down right now, it's not acceptable in any way, shape, or form. And I'd like to question you all, the trustees, have you even driven through our subdivision?
I've driven every street.
Any times.
And I have many times recently.
And do you think it's acceptable?
I would say that there are spots that are definitely not acceptable.
The entire roadway surface throughout the neighborhood rumbles as you drive across it. It is not.
And it was supposed to, as you drive, was gonna smooth it out, whatever. And I'm like, there, me, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not gonna say I am, but I'm a little bit smart. And I could tell you, unless you're driving, what do you call it, the machine that rolls it on out, it wasn't gonna go anywhere just from car traffic. It wasn't. And it's not now. I don't care if you drive on it for 10 more years, it ain't gonna change. So what are we gonna do to fix it?
We also discovered this week there are some valve accesses that were paved over by the crew, which Steve addressed, I think, but.
So what are we gonna do to fix it? I'm asking you.
I'm sure it's gonna get addressed. You're not the only neighborhood that's got some issues, and I'm sure that they're all gonna get addressed.
Yeah, and that's my other question. Where else?
I believe we've withheld the money from the company to ensure that we do.
Where else was this done?
It was done in my neighborhood, and while the cul-de-sacs don't look as bad as yours, we haven't had any complaints in our neighborhood.
And I'd like to hear what the status is, too, from Steve. Two weeks ago, you gave us one in our last meeting. Where are we now with the contractor? Has anything changed?
Well, I'll jump the road reports then.
Why don't we just, why don't we wait? Because he's got, he's got four minutes, so let him finish in anything else he has.
Well, I'll finish. That was my question.
Okay.
What's, what's being addressed to fix this? Because we were told it was gonna get fixed.
Right.
But yet, nothing's been done.
Right.
So I'm kinda like, you know, hey, we're gonna do it, but we're not.
Well, I'm sure it's gonna get done, A, because we withheld, we withheld all their money, so they're definitely, and it's a 900 and some thousand dollar project, so I guarantee they're gonna do something about it, A. And B, I'm sure Steve probably has a reported, his road report, I'm sure he's gonna give us the full report.
Okay. I'll stick around.
Appreciate that. Wow. Okay.
That's a drill. That's horrible.
Good morning.
Wow. Okay.
I move we pick a different alarm sound. Is there a second?
I think the room will second back.
It's Google.
Okay, I think that does it for public comments. Next up is planning and zoning report. Mr. Eucauter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two resolutions tonight. The first is a resolution approving a major adjustment with conditions to an approved planning and development for Northlake Commons, 11-501 Northlake Drive, and dispensing with the second reading. And I would just note that the conditions are as proposed by the zoning commission unless proposed as amended by staff and the board.
Okay, so I guess we are looking for a motion.
I move we approve the resolution as presented by Mr. Eucauter with the changes proposed by staff incorporated within it. Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Dieters?
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swigman.
Aye.
Mr. Weeden.
Aye.
Next, a resolution approving a major adjustment with conditions to an approved plan unit development for Lemons and Lions Boutique LLC, 7292 Kenwood Road, and dispensing with the second reading. And the conditions from the zoning commission remain the same unchanged as recommended by staff.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Dieters?
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swigman.
Aye.
Mr. Weeden.
Aye.
With that, the only thing I have is at 12093, you'll remember the Sixth Avenue House that is on the slate to be demolished. Tomorrow, Wayne Contractors will be on site to start work to demolish that.
Ah.
The homeowner contracted with Wayne Contractors. In talking with Wayne Contractors, we saw a quote from them. Their quote was about $6,000 cheaper than the next lowest at 2150. So they'll be on site to mobilize for the house. They'll also take down the garage. The homeowner will take the, the cost for the house. The township will take the 2150, the cost for the garage, and the both unsafe structures will be removed. We have one more unsafe structure on Coogler Mill that we're still working through, which should be in process in the next couple of weeks.
Is that a tax assessment on the garage?
What's that?
How are we getting our money back on the garage?
It'll be a tax assessment.
Okay.
On 2024. With that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Welcome. Next up is sheriff's patrol report. Now to you, ma'am.
Not to me. All right. My name is Lieutenant Barbara Stuckey. Obviously, Lieutenant Tar is, I took his place tonight. He sent a couple, he already sent his main report to you. He did have a couple things he wanted me to address was about car 79 that was involved in a wreck on 71. The party that was involved is now accepting the liability, and it's currently being repaired. So that's moving forward. And also, Lieutenant Tar and all the officers want to thank you all for the candy for last night, and they always get a, I mean, it's so much fun for the officers and the kids. So we really appreciate it. I've been with the department for years, and it's always been Sycamore always outshines everyone else. So thank you for all the years and last night. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Captain Newman?
So I'll follow with lieutenant's report there. We, we had a very successful night last night. We were able to hit both the north and south areas. We teamed up with the sheriff's department with this crew, so that went very well last night. Of course, the kids, as soon as they see us, know, know what we're getting and what we give out. So it doesn't make it enjoyable in that manner. A couple of things real quick to go through, just to give you, on our runs, we're on track to exceed 5,000 runs for this year, which is about 200 over the 2022, which was record-setting at that time. So even though we have a one facility that we don't have running right now, we're still exceeding our, our runs to this time. One of the things that we're working with, with Sergeant Sovereign and Lieutenant Tar on the sheriff's department, is on November 7th, we are having a rescue task force, so the RTF exercise with Moller High School, that morning at 9:00 AM. The big difference we're doing this year that we haven't done in the years prior with the active shooter event, because they're one of the few that we are able to work with, with students present in there, the parents have been notified for about the last month, when it's gonna take, is we are actually, I asked to do a fire alarm activation right after the shooting begins, because of the history around the country, that that's one of the techniques that an active shooter is doing. So we are going to be doing, conducting it that Wednesday, or that Tuesday morning next week. Unfortunately, it's election day, too, so I understand. It wasn't a pity. It wasn't my choice of days, let's just say that. And then one.
Thanks to Moller for allowing.
Yes.
For working with you and allowing, and allowing you to do that. I think it's important.
And then one thing I can, I wanna personally speak to, just to let you guys know, is Lyondale Bazelle. I actually attended a sponsored industrial emergency for municipalities training down at Texas A&amp;M University a couple weeks back. That was sponsored by them. It was only a training for municipalities that have Lyondale Bazelle in their territory. So a lot of the firefighters that I actually got to do the industrial emergencies with worked refineries, which were down in Iowa and down in Texas. So that was very interesting to be involved in that, because it was actually live propane leaks, tanker trucks, rail cars, something like East Palestine did, but teaching you how to go in there and shut valves off in the midst of the flames. So, yeah, it was very good, but it was sponsored by them. They reached out, and so I went there to represent the township for that down at Texas A&amp;M, so.
Thank you.
Besides that, I think that's all I have to report, sir. Just answer your questions.
Thank you.
Roads, ma'am.
Sorry, I skipped. Boy, I jumped, I even skipped the law director report. Okay, roads and maintenance and recreation report.
Okay. Appreciate that. We'll start with the parks and rec report. Just wanted to report, our staff has completed maintenance repairs to the Schuler Walking Path and the McDaniel Park Walking Paths. Those repairs included asphalt pavement repairs and crack sealing of the path. Also want to make a note that the admin playfields behind our building here, last week, we top dressed and overseeded all the playing fields. We actually spread about 180 cubic yards of dirt sand mix. It's a play mix to fill in any of the deviations in the playfields. And we rockhounded, pulled out some rocks, still that were still left over from the construction. And those fields will be closed probably for most of next year. So just wanted to make a note of that, so everybody's aware of what's going on back there. Roads report, an update on the township's 23 road program. The township is going to have a third-party inspector do an evaluation of the project next week. After the evaluation is completed, we will be meeting with Strouser Construction and their third-party representative to discuss each party's evaluation results. And their third-party representative is the National Pavement Preservation Association. Somebody's gonna be flying in town to discuss with myself, Mr. Gould, Mr. Callums.
That's theirs or ours?
That's theirs, yes.
And who's ours?
We're gonna hire consultant WSP.
Is there a process in our contract with them that requires that, like an appraisement type procedure, where each party gets a neutral third party, or is this just a process we've come up with?
This is just, yeah, this is just negotiations that we're in the process of, yes. And to answer Mr. Brockman's, a couple other questions that he had. I have been the road superintendent all year, so Mr. Callums was not involved with any of the bidding or planning process. That was, that was myself. And the roads do smooth out over time. Kennedy Avenue off Montgomery was one road that we did, I think, four or five years ago. And Glenover Road by All Saints, that whole neighborhood back in there is about five, six years old. So if you want to check those out, those would be some good roads to.
I do have a buddy that lives back there, says that he don't think it's any good.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, it's, I'm not gonna debate or sub.
Well, buddy, you're saying.
I'm just, it is an asphalt. You are correct. It's not an asphalt overlay. It's not an asphalt traditional where you grind the pavement and put new pavement down. It's a pavement preservation project that extends the roads, our roads, seven to eight years before. We do have to come in and pave the road. So a traditional mill and overlay.
So I guess this person that's gonna come in is gonna decide, hey, here's how we're gonna fix it, or?
They will give recommendations, and our consultant will have some recommendations, and then that's when I guess we'll.
And I guess we'll be made aware of what the recommendations are?
Absolutely.
So if we don't come to some sort of agreement that's acceptable, that gets the roadways acceptable with them, what is our next step? Legation or tration, mediation?
Well, yeah, we'll just have to bring that to the board's attention and see where we need to go with it, yes. And we have not paid a dime, as was mentioned earlier. So the contract was almost $900,000, and we have not paid anything yet.
It would, it would be some kind of litigation. Now, we did about 13 miles of road this year. We are not, we are not saying that none of it is acceptable. There, there's no way we're going to win a case of, say, 13 miles of road are not any good, because that's not the case. A lot of the cul-de-sacs are very bad. A lot of the intersections are, have a little bit to be desired, but a lot of it is good. We have been, Steve and myself and Mike have gone out and looked at them. They are tightening up. There are some that aren't. I mean, over there on Westover.
Westover.
Probably the worst one in the township.
It is the worst.
I would agree it's the worst one.
You know, it was bad before. They came in and tried to do a patch job and did the patch job wrong. It's worse now than it ever was. So we will be negotiating with them. Steve has been right on top of this the whole time, but for us to expect that they're gonna redo 13 miles of road is unrealistic, because 13 miles are not bad. But there are areas.
There are, I think there are areas of Stirbridge that are just fine. The straightaways, for the most part, are fine.
Yeah.
I found some issues at some of the intersections, maybe Pepperell. And the cul-de-sacs are where they, where we really have issues, because they, it's not automatically applied through, through automation. They do it by hand in the cul-de-sacs, and that's really the issue. They, it's a, that's the difference between it being automatically applied by a machine and then doing it by hand. So that's one of the issues I found in Stirbridge specifically. And, but I find some of those roads to be just fine. I mean, some of the straightaways look totally fine to me. So.
Yeah, pretty rumbly, though. Question as to what Tom was saying, Steve. I know at some point, they told the contractor, stop in Stirbridge.
Absolutely.
Had, had they finished, in their view at least, what they were doing on the straightaways, and the stop was as to the cul-de-sacs, or was there more work they were supposed to do on the straightaways, covering the things they covered up for accessing pipes and so on?
No, the stop was their first attempt at doing some pavement repairs, doing repair work. They were complete with the project, so we told them to stop with the repairs.
Okay.
The repairs weren't acceptable. Also, I'd like to add, there is a two-year warranty with this project. Mr. Gould and myself, we've been going out, we've finished the southern half of the township. We are self-rating this. We've come up with a rating system and made notation of where there's issues, so we can track this into the future as well, if there would be a warranty claim.
When does the warranty run from?
That is a good question. I'm assuming two years from when we accept the project, which we haven't accepted it yet.
To Mr. James's point about rumbling, this is not a mill and fill. This is, this is an application on top, and it's not gonna be perfectly flat like a mill and fill would be. That's just the way it is. So our goal is to preserve at a much, much reduced cost our roads versus a mill and fill, which is extremely expensive. And it gives us up to 20 years of additional life at a, at a fraction of the cost. This is, this is a good process. It's worked before. It's, it worked on Kennedy. It's worked in others, in other neighborhoods, just fine. You know, if there are issues with this, we need to address it. And I think by withholding the 900 grand that we owe these guys, we're gonna come to a conclusion rather quickly. So I don't know that there's really an issue. You know, it's probably not working on the same timetable you like, Tom, but, but quite frankly, it's gonna happen.
I got homeowners that are asking me, you know, we were told, and I mean, people are out there with Steve and them, we're driving through the air, they're gonna fix it. We can't fix it now, it's too hot. We gotta wait for it to cool.
Okay.
And then, you know, two months go by, where it's cool and nothing's occurred, people are going, okay, will we just be given lip service, or are we really gonna get something accomplished here?
Well, now you know the rest of the story.
Why I'm asking you is.
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
They're all watching. They're all watching and they want to know.
Yeah, we have no issues with that.
Want to go.
But now you know the rest of the story and now for those people who call you and ask, you can tell them that we are still engaging these people and in the process of trying to figure out how to resolve it. We're going to get experts in on both sides to try to determine who's right and who's wrong, and we'll figure out how to fix it. But I think that was, that's probably a pretty good answer for the residents to give your call, that we haven't just forgot about it. We're still working on it.
That is correct. And we do have the company's attention. The president of the company will be attending this meeting as well, so.
It's a $900,000 project. They're not going to, they're not going to not pay attention to it.
They might want to show up.
So, yeah, I think they'll want to show up, but I think it's also important to note, like Mr. Callums noted, it's, it's pretty unrealistic to think that they're going to tear up 13 miles of road and replace it. But, but there are some very obvious deficiencies that I would be surprised that third parties would find deniable.
Either third party.
Yeah, either third party. It's fairly obvious.
Touch up and clean up is another factor too.
Yeah, so, you know, I appreciate you, you've got people asking you and you want to be able to take some information back to them. And I hope that this exchange has been helpful to you and know that, you know, neither staff nor this board here has, has forgotten about it. It's, it's important that we get it done and we get it done right. So thank you for coming.
Okay, a couple other quick announcements. Leaf pickup will continue through December 18th. Today, we started running a third truck and later this week, we will add a fourth truck. Our goal is to service every street once a week, so. The monthly brush collection is a Saturday, November 4th, 8 to 4 behind the Township Administration Building. And that is all I have.
So talk to me about the snowplow rodeo. I hear we have some excellent drivers of our large, of our large equipment.
We do. A.J. Beach, he finished first in the snowplow rodeo. And Mark Sailor finished first in the skid steer equipment operator position out of all the townships.
That's great.
Yep, we have two outstanding employees.
And I know that sounds like funny games, but the reality is, it's heavy equipment and being able to operate it properly and efficiently matters.
And Mark wins every year.
He does.
Every year. It's amazing.
Well, congratulations to them and-
And they did pick up their sweatshirts today.
Nice.
Yep.
Nice, nice.
Winning prizes, yeah.
I do want to thank Steve, by the way. I mentioned a few times the covered up thing under the red wig here. You were on that right away after I emailed you about it when I heard about it. Thank you for being all over that.
And the tree down over on Trobe.
That's right. You got that taken care of too?
And a few more in between, I'm sure.
Very good. You're a busy man.
Always.
We'll take it.
All right. With that, let's move on to the law director report.
Nothing from the law director's office. I know we're a little bit delayed on this landmark decision we've been waiting for. I checked the docket today and there's been nothing from the court, so we're still waiting.
Still waiting. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the administrator report.
All right. So the first thing I have is Veterans Memorial Project. As you know, we've been working on this, something that's been very near and dear to my heart, trying to get this off the ground. We are having a public meeting, open house style, before the trustees' meeting on November 14th from 6 to 7. So that'll be right here. We will have climbers here. We're hoping to have some people from the Legion here along with staff, so. Yes, all the, so we will be having handouts, but questionnaires because we want some input from residents. We'll have a loop going through a PowerPoint and it will be on the website too. I believe it's already on there as far as everything that's going to be presented is on the website. So if you can't make it, they can, we'll have the questionnaire on there too, that they could respond online if they can't make the meeting. So besides that, I have a resolution tonight. As you know, the East Ed's duties, Skylar was the one that was in charge of that. We have, I know we were contacted by Mark Duffer from Ohio Pace, who's talking to Jeff, and we have not replaced Skylar's duty, so we'll have a resolution for Jeff to take that place. So a resolution appointing Jeff Eucauter to serve on the Board of Directors of Spurbin Communities Energy Special Improvement District Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weeber.
Aye.
And I also have some purchase orders for you tonight. So following purchase orders, PO number 23-07-1, Duke Energy, $20,777.78. This is a street lighting assessment. 23-41-2, a blanket vendor for roads utilities with an amount of $9,623.85. That is coming out of the road funds. 23-71-3, a blanket vendor, $10,000 for fire tuition. That's coming out of fire departments' funds. 23-170, Highland Administrative Services, the Ohio Plan, that's our property casualty insurance renewal for 2024. That is in the amount of $144,222. That comes out of all departments, roads, fire, police, and administration. And then 23-171 for the Cincinnati City School District, this is for the Redstone School payment from that TIF. This is $261,910.84.
Motion to approve all aforementioned POs. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weeber.
Aye.
That's all I have, ma'am.
All right. Fiscal officer report. Mr. Dieters.
Sorry, question. Tracy, have we started re-advertising yet for the fiscal finance committee? Okay.
It's on the website, yes.
All right, thank you. Any answers from anyone?
Not yet.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Dieters, fiscal officer report.
Yes, the township had cash receipts of $127,645.53, dispersments of $508,964.91. A complete listing of the cash receipts and dispersments is available in the packet.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weeber.
Aye.
Okay. With that, trustee comments.
Yeah, I guess I'll start. I want to thank Tracy Callums. You know, for, for a number of years, we've been kicking around the idea of putting in a new veterans memorial. And it always seemed to make it to the back burner, but Tracy's got it on the front burner. Last Friday, we were out at Fairfield Township, Steve, myself, Tracy, George Glover, the Assistant Administrator Chuck Goines, and trustee Mike Birding in Fairfield Township. And they were successful in getting a capital grant from the capital budget up in Columbus to put theirs together. And so we are in the process of applying for a capital grant for the, for the, for our veterans memorial. And they, they were extremely hospitable, great group of guys, and we had a chance to go through the process of kind of getting a lay of the land on, on the capital application and capital funds application. And had an opportunity to walk the memorial and kind of get an explanation as to why they did certain things and why they didn't do other things. And it was a great process. So I know Tracy and Mike also visited a number of them, I think, this week. Tracy, is that correct?
Yes. We visited about seven other ones, as a matter of fact.
Okay. In preparation for our meeting coming up on the 14th. So I just want to thank Tracy. He's done, he's done a great job on this and made sure that this didn't make it to the back burner again. It's on the front burner and we're moving forward, so great job.
Thank you.
It's exciting. It's an exciting project, for sure. With a grandfather who was a Sycamore Township veteran, I'm eager to see this project advance. So thank you for moving it to the front burner.
You're welcome.
I'll add to those comments too. This is a good project. It's nice to come into the meeting and find out what's going on with it. Let me know beforehand sometimes too, please, I will say, but, but it's nice to get the update on what's going on. It is election time and silly season. There are all kinds of crazy mailers out there, some of them even literally defamatory out there now as of today, so.
Mr. James, this is not the place for political commentary. This is people's business.
I just simply have a question.
So let's keep it out of the, keep it out of the trustees' room, please.
I was simply noticing, noting that is going on and to check things out for yourself.
Do duly notice.
You've been criticized on this before, Tom. You don't bring, you don't bring politics into this room. That's just how we work here.
I understand that certainly. I do have a question though, because you've sent some things to residents quoting me as saying, "It's just political," as to something. And I'd like to know what's the quote from? This is my only opportunity to ask you. Do you have an answer?
No, I think there's opportunity outside of this forum. This is not, this is not the place for politics.
Very good. I do agree with that, so thank you.
There's a place for it and it's not in this room.
All right, agreed.
Plenty of opportunity when we, when we gavel out.
We'll remember that going forward.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay, very good. That being said, Election Day is coming up, Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. Hamilton County polling hours are from 6:30 AM until 7:30 PM. We encourage folks to please go out and cast their vote. It's your, your opportunity to get involved with, with your government, your community, and, and help make decisions going forward. Veterans Day is also coming up. It will be observed Friday, November 10th, here at the township, which means our township offices will be closed. Also additionally, on Monday, November 13th, the zoning commission meeting has been canceled due to lack of agenda, I would assume.
Yes, ma'am.
And then our next meeting will be here on Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. Just prior to that will be the open house regarding the veterans memorial that Mr. Callums mentioned earlier. The open house will run from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, right here at the township building. We encourage folks to come out and give us, give us your, give us your thinking and your feedback. Again, we always love to hear from you. Again, the trustee meeting will then immediately follow at 7:00 PM, right here as well. And for all other scheduled meetings and events, please see the published calendar on our website. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven.
All right.